Good evening. The Finance and Law Subcommittee shall come to order. I'll start off with roll call. Mrs. Shavz?
Present.
Gregory DeMello, present. First up on the agenda, we have disposal of surplus equipment requests, and that's from the Taunton High School CTE department. Mrs. Monahan, please.
Thank you, Dr. DeMello. As you'll see in the packet, there are multiple items that are asked to be put to surplus, which will then go on to Gov. Deals for sale. The first one is a Powormatic jointer model from 2009, $400 estimated value. The next one is a Powormatic drill press. There are four of them in fair condition. A next one is Laguna bandsaw from 2009 in fair condition. There's one of them. A Delta radial arm saw model from 2009 in fair condition. And then there is a saw top 12-inch table saw with extension model from 2009 in fair condition. A Powormate 201 planter that is in fair condition with an estimated value of $2,000. Then the Laguna 18 bandsaw from 2009, Powormatic lathe from 2009. There are four of those. And those are the items that are no longer being used at Taunton High School in the CTE program.
Wonderful.
I make a motion that we accept this, put it on file, and let them -- would you say you're going to post that?
Gov. Deals.
Gov. Deal, and then that's where they get sold?
Correct.
Okay.
Wonderful. I'll second the motion. Just a quick discussion. So, we have new equipment that came in?
Well, it's been -- they haven't been used in many, many years. They're over 10 years old.
Okay.
So there are items that have been phased out and have been replaced.
And maybe a safety issue too with the old equipment?
Well, that's why they're not being used right now.
Okay.
Because that's at -- I mean, I'm sure somebody that out there could be using it, but that's dated for our students.
Good, good. So I did second the motion. All in favor? Aye. Aye opposed. Ayes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have the Taunton High School softball field renovation bid award. See attached memo. Mrs. Monahan.
Thank you. I don't like to read things, but I think it's best to read it too so people would understand. So, just last school committee meeting, we opened up the bid for the softball renovation project, and we received four bids. Green Acres Landscape Construction, Heimlich Landscaping, Nell Corporation and Yardworks. And you'll see the bid amount there. And the lowest bid is going to Heimlich Landscaping and Construction Corporation, which includes -- and excuse me, that one was for $2.7 -- $2.8 million. And that includes a $50,000 for the alt work, which is electrical work at the baseball field. So Nezahra has previously completed projects with Heimlich, and that are similar in scope and magnitude. Because of Heimlich being the lower bid, that is the one that I am recommending to award the bid. So when we originally projected the cost to be about $2 million, but the lowest bid came in at an increase of $795,000, which again includes the alternate for the $50,000 electrical work at the baseball field. So the school committee previously approved the funding of this project to be charged to our revolving account. So currently, you'll see there, our revolving account balance is $3,572,000. And below, you'll see that our last three years of revenue and expenses in our revolving. So as you can see there, that right now, we have a revolving revenue at $2.4 million this year and revolving expenses at $1.8 million. So we are in a strong financial position to approve the bid for $2,795,000. Over the last three years, we've averaged about $2 million in revenue and about $1.7 million in expenses, resulting in a hefty revolving account balance of $3.6 million. And this includes funding a capital improvement plan like the football stadium in FY '23. Even with the proposed additional expense of $795,000, I do anticipate we will maintain a balance of $3 million by the end of this fiscal year. Therefore, I do recommend that we award the bid in its entirety of $2,795,000 to Heimlich Landscaping and Construction Corporation.
Thank you. Mrs. Shavz?
I make a motion that we award the bid to Heimlich Landscaping in its entirety for the $2,795,000.
Second on discussion. So, the $50,000 alternate for baseball field, is that okay to include in this? I mean?
Absolutely, because it is an alternate. That was part of the scope of work, that they could bid all -- all the bids came in. That was considered to be an item that they could -- they bid on it as well.
Good.
Because an add alt is you can add it or you don't have to. It's not a part of the bid.
And who -- were they the ones that did our baseball field?
Heimlich, no. Heimlich did -- who -- Heimlich did -- was it? Green Acres did the baseball. That was before me. The tennis courts. And Nezahra, like I did say, Nezahra has worked with them in other projects as well.
Did Green Acres do our softball, our baseball field?
Baseball.
That's right. That's right. Good for them. Okay. So, okay. I just, you know, I'm one of those, I don't mind spending money. I don't like spending money, but I don't mind spending money when it's great quality work. So, you're comfortable with that. I'm fine with that too. So, the motion's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Ayes have it. Thank you. Next up, we have the facilities update. See attached memo. Back to you, Mrs. Monahan.
The Director of Facilities, Mark Freitas, provides us with a monthly facility dude, which again, it is the maintenance software that both the city and the staff, school staff, enter. Any facility issues that need to be addressed. Attached, you will see the work comparison from July 1st through October 9th. With the total amount of work orders entered is 586 orders. And of those 586, 464 work orders, which is 77% of all work orders for the city buildings. So the school department has the most. And then again, if you look at the spreadsheet, the chart that Director of Facilities, Mark Freitas, did provide us, you'll see there how many open per school and how many closed tickets per school.
Great.
I make a motion that we accept the report and place it on file.
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Ayes have it. Next up, we have bills payable. We'll start off with FY '25 in the amount of $1,962,562.62. Mrs. Shavz?
I have a few questions. Okay. First one on page eight. $34,000 for this GDW government instructional technology. Is this still?
That is for the -- that is all for the business department.
Okay.
Instructional equipment for the business department.
Okay.
And then also a part of that too is the Google Workspace for Education, which is a yearly renewal, which is that $34,000, that amount there.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Yeah, okay. On the next page, on page nine, that Collins Construction, what building are they doing the improvement that is $286,000?
That is the commercial kitchen. You'll see a few more.
Oh, that is still the commercial?
Yes, all of Collins. You'll see that coming up again. So that's the commercial kitchen. Hopefully, that'll be completed by the end of October.
Okay.
And that is charged to a grant, yes.
Okay. On page 18, that Compan Playground, is that for Tiger Tots?
That one is for -- which one is? How much is that one for? Sorry about that.
$68,000.
$68,000 will be the Tiger Tots. And then, excuse me, the $68,000 is the Pole Playground. There's a second playground out here.
Over here, okay.
Off to the side.
Playground. Page 24. What's this Pickup Patrol?
Pickup Patrol, yes.
I looked at it online. It's a piece of software.
It is.
So how does that -- I was interested in how it's working out. What is it?
It's working out. This is the second year. Pole has actually used it here. And they -- it brings out to see how -- where -- what child's parent is there at pickup line. The child is sent right down. It is a software that moves this, the line for pickup very quickly.
Very quickly.
And Pole has really loved it and has shared it with other schools as well.
So is this a district service or it's paid by a school?
It's for this school only that's using it right now.
On the next page, page 25, you have $51,000 for athletic equipment, which I don't argue the athletic equipment. The only thing I was wondering is similarly that we had all of the surplus materials. Are these being replaced? And are there materials that are going to go to surplus? Or are these items that are things we didn't have and we're now purchasing them?
They're not usually -- we don't usually deem the uniforms or anything like that to surplus.
Oh, this is uniforms. Okay.
This could be all of the supplies that is -- could be -- it could be uniforms. It could be additional balls or whatever it would be. So that is a part of the equipment itself.
Okay.
Also, sometimes it's customary to have the equipment refurbished. Like the helmets, the pads.
The helmets, and yep, that makes sense. Okay, the last one I had was on -- oh, no, that's on the next one. That's it for this one. Thank you.
You bet.
Great. I just have a couple. Actually, one was the same as Mrs. Shavz's question. On page three, so we have the billing starting for the Associates for Human Services for 12-5. So this is a monthly cost. This is a little bit different than the other provider coaching for change.
Correct.
So this is just a flat fee?
This is the monthly charge for TASK?
Okay. And I know last time I -- there was some concern. I had some concern about the internships and so forth. I'm sure that we'll get updates accordingly on that. Because, you know, I don't want to wait till May to get an update from someone that we're paying $100,000 to.
Yeah, just for clarity, would the update be from my administration or update from TASK?
Whatever you feel.
What's the preference?
I mean, if you want to reach out to them and give us an update. I mean, again, I just don't want to wait till May to get a report like we did last time, which wasn't really complete. I mean, I'm--
So we'll -- how about then, would -- you can't make a motion, right? Because you're the chair. So would somebody make a motion for a monthly update from TASK?
I'll make a motion for a monthly update from TASK.
Absolutely. I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, have it. So the motion is made and confirmed. Next one up, I have was page four. So the food truck builders, that's for food truck?
Correct.
I saw it riding around the city yesterday or today. So it's rolling. It's registered. I saw mass plates on it, I believe.
We are -- it's not up and running just yet. We're just parading it around for marketing purposes. Reason being is that the food truck needs to have a commercial kitchen up and running for the food truck to be up and running. So once we have the commercial kitchen done with the renovation, we will go ahead and start up the food truck.
Okay, so we get some--
And just so you know, the first visit we're planning is to Bristol County Savings Bank, which we'll invite the school committee, because Bristol County Savings Bank provided us with funding for the food truck.
That'd be very, very nice. Absolutely. Good. And just one more. I had page nine, which Mrs. Shavz already asked. Page 16. Let me just go quickly. What is page 16? Oh, the GATRA, the $6,000. So is this a monthly or is this paid per use?
So we've allocated some funds to provide GATRA passes for our students. So we have an open PO encumbering the funds. And Director of Student Services and Transportation, Stephanie Hoy, will go and request additional passes from GATRA for the house offices at the high school.
Okay, so we're getting -- these are actual passes that are being used? We're not paying for some that's not being used?
No, absolutely not.
Great, okay. So I guess the motion would be in order?
I make a motion to approve the warrant in the amount of $1,962,562.62.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Ayes have it. Next up, we have the FY '24 in the amount of $296,994.94.
I just have one question, which was on the school security for $18,000. What school was that?
It was for the high school security booth.
For the security booth?
Yes, we put on some shielding on the windows.
Thank you. That's all I have.
And I just have one item. WB Mason, $258,195.20. So this was all delivered by June 30th?
It was encumbered June 30th. And then once it's received, which is what we are doing now, we then pay for it.
Okay, because it's referring to FY '24, right?
Correct. It was -- this is big furniture items that we had for the high school library, for the main entrance there, main lobby. So again, those were ordered, encumbered, and now they've been received. So that is why we're paying.
Okay, great. Right, which we had a pleasure to see last Wednesday. It was absolutely beautiful. Yeah, very nice. Very comfortable, very accommodating. I think our students are going to love it. Mrs. Shavz?
I make a motion that we approve the warrant
I'll second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Ayes have it. Motion to adjourn would be in order.
I make a motion that we adjourn?
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed. Ayes have it. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. I call the meeting to order. If you could please join us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early night what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare and the bombs bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Mrs. Fagan will lead the invocation. Thank you.
Lord, as we begin this session, let us acknowledge your goodness and mercy and ask your blessings on all our deliberations. We thank you for this opportunity to be of service to our community and to the young people entrusted to our care. I also have an obituary, so I'm going to be asking for a moment of silence for Mr. Teddy Beavers, who passed away at the age of 75 at the West Roxbury, Virginia Medical Center. Was the husband on October 11th, excuse me. He was the husband of Beverly Packer Beavers of Taunton, born in West Virginia. He was educated in Baltimore schools. He served his country in the US Navy during the Vietnam War and had resided in Taunton since 2013. A member of the Taunton Rifle and Pistol Club. He enjoyed shooting. He also enjoyed traveling with his wife, fishing, volunteering at the Council of Aging, and his cherished time that he's had with his family and his beloved grandchildren. He is survived by Lee Beth Clark of Taunton, Rosalynn Depremo and her husband Tony of Norton, and Shawna Bigham and husband Peter of Kingston. He also leaves four grandchildren, one of whom is Tim Clark, who is a member of the Taunton Public School system. He is the director of grants for us. He also leaves many -- he leaves siblings, many nieces, nephews, and cousins. So appreciate a moment of silence for Mr. Teddy Beavers, and our sympathies are extended to his family. And keep -- please keep him in your thoughts and prayers. Thank you. I have one other announcement. Mayor O'Connell, if it's okay. I just want you to know that our colleague, Mr. Stephen Viera, had emergency surgery this past weekend. He's in the hospital over at -- he was at Sturdy. And please keep him and his thoughts and prayers, your prayers to him. Thank you.
Of course. Thank you, Mrs. Fagan. Okay, roll call, please.
Yes. Mr. Enos.
Present.
Mrs. Shavz.
Present.
Mr. Polowski.
Present.
Mrs. Fagan is present. Mr. Laura.
Present.
Ms. Santos is absent. Of course, Mr. Viera is absent. Mr. -- I'm sorry, Dr. DeMello.
Present.
Mayor O'Connell.
Present. Thank you. Approval of the minutes of October 2, 2024?
As submitted.
Second.
Motion and second on discussion, Mrs. Shavz?
Yes. After the conversation was had, this is on page nine. After the conversation, the second paragraph talks about Mr. Laura and what he had brought up. There was a response by Mr. Delarussue. And then there was a response by me. And then there was again another response by Mr. Delarussue, and that's missing from here. It's at about, I looked at it online. It's one hour and 29 minutes and 55 seconds into the -- so that there's a whole section like that isn't here that I'd like to be added in.
Okay, so if we could -- yeah. Approve the minutes with the addition that will be posted when it is corrected.
Corrected, yes.
Okay. So motion and second. Thank you for bringing that to our attention.
You're welcome.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Okay, and we have the Student Advisory Committee report from Isaiah Wendell.
Thank you, Mayor O'Connell. Good evening, everyone. I am pleased to present the following updates and events from our student body. Band SOC fundraiser. Our band launched their SOC fundraiser today. This initiative is aimed at raising funds for our upcoming for their upcoming events and performances. We encourage everyone to participate and support the band. PSATs. PSATs will take place on Saturday, October 26th. Students are preparing for this important testing date, which serves as both a practice for the SATs and an opportunity for scholarships. WPI math team field trip. The math team is looking forward to their upcoming field trip to WPI, which will be a valuable experience for students to engage with math professionals and compete with other schools. New food truck arrival. Our school's new food truck has arrived, completed with a shiny, brand-new wrap, and it is an exciting addition. And we are looking forward for our students to utilize it throughout this school year and forward. National Honor Society meeting. Candidates for the National Honor Society will have a meeting on Friday to review their responsibilities and confirm their participation in this prestigious program. BCC field trip. Next Tuesday, selected students participating in the Early College Program will visit Bristol Community College. This trip will provide valuable exposure to college life and opportunities for earning college credits. College visits. Suffolk University visited on October 9th along with Bryant University on October 11th. And concluding today, Bryant College visited us at the Colleging Career Center with a great turnout from students, where students had a chance to learn more about the programs offered and ask questions on the admissions process for all of those schools. Football updates. We've increased safety measures during football games to enhance the atmosphere and ensure a positive experience for both players and spectators. Girls soccer senior night. Senior night for our girls soccer team is this Friday. We invite everyone to come out and support the team as they celebrate their seniors' final season. Girls volleyball pinkout. Last night, girls volleyball pinkout was a success, raising awareness and support for Breast Cancer Awareness Month. This team, the team and attendance were decked out in all pink to show their support. Tiger Tots return. Our Tiger Tot program has resumed as of October 7th. This program brings young children into our building, allowing high school students to engage with early childhood education hands-on. I would like to thank you all for your continued support for our students' activities and events. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Isaiah. We're always pleased to hear about how connected and engaged students are. So, thank you. Okay, we will move on to -- oh, I'm sorry.
Comment, Mayor. Thank you. Mr. Wendell, so on the field trips to the colleges, what's the average participation? Any idea how many students are traveling to these sites?
I don't have an exact number, but it's usually a school bus or so with--
Pretty full?
Yeah, with the additional staffing.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public input this evening?
There is no public input.
Okay, thank you. And we will move on to E, which is the FY '25 preschool updates. Superintendent Cabral?
So thank you. At this time, I'd like to invite Director of Special Education, Amy Monahan, and Director of Student Services and Transportation, Stephanie Hoy, to the podium. And as they're preparing to give their presentation, I also want to remind the committee that this is something that this committee has fully supported going back, I believe, over a three or four-year period, where this is an investment, similar to what you've done with the Chapter 74 programs. You have invested in the staff that have allowed us, year-to-date, to create six new pre-K classrooms, with potentially a seventh on the horizon. So again, great investment, supports our kids, and it really helps students get a head start in their education. And we've noticed, and you'll hear in the presentation, we've noticed a substantial difference from students who've attended our high-quality pre-K programs. When they enter kindergarten, they are way ahead of the curve. But again, I'll let Stephanie and Amy do -- because I can't do this presentation justice.
You just did it, so thank you. So just thank you all. Steph and I are always happy to be here to present great news for you, for us, to you guys. So this is -- I'm very happy to be here because preschool is very near and dear to me. I've always liked that. I was a former preschool teacher. And this work actually started pre-COVID through a CIT with the former sped director, Special Education Director, and the former Student Services person. So Kathy Perry and Judy Mulrooney actually started some of this work. I was on the CIT as a special ed administrator and--
I was on the CIT as a special ed principal.
So this is great. This is just all great news. So let's get this show on a little bit. Okay, so as with anything we do, you guys know our strategic plan and our promises. Everything we do ties into one of these things. So this is really focusing on families, family engagement, community partnership, and then curriculum instruction and assessment planning. Oh, sorry. So a little bit of where we started. So prior to our work that we've done, we had a preschool building, the Letty Preschool. And there, we have 10 integrated half-day classrooms educating students ages three to five years old. On average, yearly enrollment is 350 students on average. So students may come for half-days, two days a week, three days a week, four days a week, but half-days. Which was great and is great, because that works with some families. But for other families, it's challenging because of their needs in terms of daycare, work schedules, and things like that. Oops. Hold on. Okay, so here's where we are today. So through all the work we've done, all the support from the committee, we now have three pre-kindergarten classrooms. So pre-kindergarten is the year before students are eligible to enter kindergarten. So it's five-year-olds that have turned five past September 1st or later, and four-year-olds, so four to five-year-olds. So that this, those three classrooms opened up in September of 2020 with the new opening of the Mulcahy Elementary School. Following that, in January of 2022, we have one pre-kindergarten classroom at the Chamberlain, one at East Taunton, Pole, and now potentially, we've identified a space at Bennett Elementary School. Each pre-K classroom serves 20 students total. There's regulations and class size laws regarding early childhood. So 20 students, that is 15 general education slots and five special education slots for it to be an integrated classroom. and five special education slots for it to be an integrated classroom. Oops. Are you gonna do this?
He's got it.
Oh, thank you. I was panicking about that. So we do have a parent who has, sharing his experience as a parent and their child in the preschool. Thank you.
Seven every day, he strives it, you know. It's great, you know, hearing him speak about, you know, music class, art class, and how he loves his teachers, and every day he's asked us, you know, if he has school tomorrow. Every single day he comes home, you know, he tells us what he's learning. He'll mention something new, so I think, I think it's amazing. The atmosphere and the vibes here at the Epo school have been amazing. Your children are in a safer environment. They're getting the best out of the teachers, and they're gonna be worked to their, to their best every day and maximize their abilities.
So if you happen to be in this building, if you go down the hall over there, that's where you'll find our preschool classroom, pre-kindergarten classroom. They look like just a little bit shorter kindergartners. And they just have so much to tell you. So it's just like really... Re, is that, okay, thank you. It's just really cool to see the little ones, it's just so cute in, in, in the buildings. And they're learning, and they're really part of the school culture and climate. They attend lunch, they go to the cafeteria, they get their specials, some of the, you know, art and music. So it's just really nice. So as a team, am I... So our vision really is to continue to expand pre-K, high-quality pre-K instruction within our district in order to provide equitable early childhood services. As you know, the governor is on board with this, everybody's on board with this. And at the end of the day, I think, Mr. Cabral, you said it nicely, that it benefits our students as they enter into kindergarten and kind of sets them ahead a little bit.
Thank you. So as Superintendent Cabral had stated earlier, thanks to all the work that not only our predecessors have done prior to us, but all the work that you have supported as a committee and superintendent as this team, as a, as a team, we have done a lot, and we've really increased the number of kids and given them access to pre-K. However, can't do it alone, and we want to continue to make sure that we are accessing funding that's available to us to make sure that we continue with that goal. So you might have heard in some of our superintendent report updates over the last several months, the Commonwealth Preschool Partnership Initiative, which is CPPI. And that is basically, the Department of Early Education and Care funds districts across the state to develop partnerships between school districts and local early education and care programs to expand the access to high-quality preschool within our district, or within districts. So when they're saying that they're supporting partnerships, is they are asking us, as part of a CPPI grant process, you'll hear us talk a little more about that grant process in a second, they'd like us, as a district, to identify two early childhood programs or partners that we can do some of this work with. So we have actually identified and started working with Head Start and the YMCA as part of these programs. This is a little bit about the grant, just to give you a little bit basic information. It offers opportunities and available to districts in high needs to support the local coordination investment in access of high-quality preschool, so removing any barriers that families may have to be able to look at high-quality programming. The grant program also aims to provide three- and four-year-olds in a district with equity, equitable access to high-quality preschool, ensuring that we have multiple provider options to choose from. So one of the things that Amy is going to describe right now is, some of the work that we're doing is, we have a lot of families who are at the YMCA preschool programs or daycare, or we have families that go to Head Start. And how do we offer them the same level of access that we offer our students that attend our, attend our pre-K programs here within Taunton Public Schools? What is that partnership going to look at like? Because at the end of the day, they're all our students. These are kids that will be walking in our kindergarten classrooms the next, the following year. So the grant levels that playing field for kindergarten readiness across the district, and it establishes curriculum and similar goals regardless of where a child is enrolled. So the goal really is, whatever is happening in one program is really happening across all programs. So for the purpose of our grant is, whatever's happening at TPS should be happening over at the YMCA and at the Head Start program. So when you are awarded CPI grant, you're making a commitment to one of these areas. We are committing to all three areas at this point. So expansion of access to quality preschool, so expanding the number of classes, but not only stopping there, also expanding those that are working with our students. So you see that social workers, community resources, removing transportation barriers, mental health supports, that's all part of this encompassing idea of making sure that we have access to all supports for all students that we are working with. Building local aligned qualities, so making sure that our curriculum across both our partners and ourselves are aligned and that we're working together with professional development with our teachers, both at Head Start, the YMCA here, so that all the information that our teachers are gaining, they are as well, so that there is not only an alignment with curriculum, but an alignment with professional development. And then lastly, and Amy will speak to this a little bit, is equitable access to our special education and inclusion.
So with this grant, it will allow us to really do some out-of-the-box thinking with how we provide special education services for our students already identified as having a disability at the preschool level. This became very clear of the need when we were dur, during COVID, when we were in shutdown. And remember how we, there were certain rules with early childhood regulations and public school where you couldn't cross or mix? Families had to make very difficult decisions, whether the full-day daycare preschool that Head Start or the YMCA, Old Colony Y, is able to offer, or coming in for the two-and-a-half, half-day program, two days or three days a week to get this, so the student can get this special education services. So now that we have this grant, we've been awarded this grant, we will be able to create an itinerant team that we will go into Head Start and we will go into the Y and provide those services for the students. It will also allow us to go in and evaluate students, so, because again, these are removing barriers. Our families that are working nine-to-five jobs don't always have the ability or the accessibility to bring their student into the Letty School or into our early childhood diagnostic center for an evaluation. Or they need full-time care, so yes, they want those services, but what do they do the rest of the day? Because they have to choose. And then that caused for disruptions. A lot of our young people struggle with transitions. And what are we asking them to do essentially? Four transitions in a day. They're at, they start their day at, say, Head Start, they leave at a cer, like midday to come to Letty School, they get their services, they go back to Letty, they go back on the van, back to Head Start, the Y, or Head Start. So we've disrupted that flow of services for them and that flow of routine, which can be problematic for some of our students, especially those with certain disabilities. So this is just gonna be, this, I'm very excited about this part because it's just gonna create more opportunities for our families. And then as a bonus for Taunton Public Schools, it's gonna create more space and opportunities for our families that want to have their students to come to that type of program. So again, it's providing more opportunities, removing a lot of barriers for our families, and also making it affordable for our families, because that's the other thing, too.
So being a part of a CPPI district is no small task, I will tell you. We probably get twenty-five emails a week on this subject, and there's a lot of moving parts, because you're working with a lot of different departments, and everybody wants to meet with you. So there's been a lot of work behind the scenes. So we thought it would be nice just to give you a little bit of timeline of when this started, as far as the CPPI grant information to where we are now and where we're going. Back in the fall of two thousand and twenty-three, we developed Taunton's Early Childhood Leadership Team. The leadership team is, is a multidisciplinary team, and it, it has educators. I think we had some former school committee members at that time.
We could use some more.
We were happy to have more. And educators within the district, we have our partners also attend, so YMCA, representatives from the Y, representatives from Head Start also attend. We have early intervention, we have Taunton Housing. We have the city, actually. We have the grant writer for City Hall is also on this EC leadership team. So we, parents, we have, it, it's really multidisciplinary because the idea is that you're getting as much feedback from as many stakeholders as possible to, to really create this robust program. So we started there, and then we did a preliminary needs assessment. So us, us with our consultants that we're working with, we did the very best we could to reach out to families, send out surveys. Surveys were at the Y, they were at Head Start, you know, do private daycares. We took them, and we made sure our teachers were also giving us feedback with surveys. And it was just basically needs, like what are your needs? What are the obstacles as a parent? What are the obstacles? Do you have your child enrolled in any type of pre-K or early childhood education program? And if you don't, why? So we gathered all that information as well, and we at that point had already identified our community partners. As I said, it was YMCA and Head Start. And then we needed to identify our priority areas. And you heard us go through our priority areas earlier, especially the focus on special education. January of 2024, after we gathered all that information, we write a report, we submit a planning grant. We waited for a little bit, but we were awarded the Expansion Implementation Planning Grant, and that was great news. That was back in May of 2024. And then in September of twenty-four, we were tasked with finalizing a budget of $250,000. So with the hu, with the $250,000, part of that budget is not only professional development, some of the itinerant staff that Ms. Moynihan had mentioned, but also a program director now that's going to take this and, and really push it to the next level. Because as much as Amy and I love doing this work, we can't do it alone. So, so that is our next, that's where we're at right now. And October 2024, Taunton Public Schools received the official award letter from the governor. We were very excited about that. And we're looking forward to our, what we'll be doing now is, basically, we'll be meeting with our early childhood leadership team to expand the needs assessment. We need to do a little bit more work on that. And then also complete a strategic plan. What is it that we're looking for for these programs? And then once we have that, we actually apply for the same grant, but FY twenty-six, and that will be for a significant amount of more money, and that will assist us in making sure that we can start increasing pre-K within our district, but also gaining the staff that are necessary to make sure that we're working with Head Start and with the YMCA in, in creating a robust teachers, professional development, social workers, anything that they may need, their itinerant team. So that will come in the spring when we have to reapply for the grant. And if we're lucky enough to be awarded the grant, we're, our fingers are crossed because we've been doing a lot of work on this, we can really see lots of our fruits of our labor, so we're very excited about that. So next steps, I kind of went ahead. But hire preschool project coordinator, conduct monthly meetings. We will continue to meet with our early childhood leadership team on a monthly basis, conduct more community-focused groups. Pre-K staff and community-based providers will attend professional development to align curriculum and resources, continue to identify pre-K expansion opportunities in our schools, and then of course, apply for the FY twenty-six implementation grant that will allow us to continue expanding pre-K as well establish an itinerant team to service students in our partner sites, YMCA and Head Start.
And if, and if any of you would like to join the leadership team to do the work on this?
Send me an email.
Just send us an email. We'd love to have you.
And, and that's it. And to...
This is our Y.
This is our Y. And to reiterate, there's, nothing gives me more pleasure than to seeing these little people walk by my office every morning, because one of the biggest things I miss is seeing little people on a daily basis in that capacity. And if you're ever in the buildings that have any of our pre-K programs, we definitely encourage you to visit them. It puts an automatic smile on your face. So thanks for your time, we appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, ladies, for the presentation, so. I will open it up if there are any comments or questions, Mrs. Shofs?
Thank you for that presentation. Just a question on the curriculum. Is the curriculum provided by the state, or are we creating the curriculum in-house? What are you using?
We have curriculum. We, I'm gonna just look at Chris to make sure we have Wonders curriculum at the preschool level.
Is that what you're using, Wonders?
And that's what we use, yeah. So one of the things that, that, out of the needs assessment and working with our partners is that money, the grant money, as, we could also help support that curriculum at the Y.
By giving them access to it.
Correct, purchasing it for them, yeah.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Ennis and then Mr. Laura, thank you.
I don't want to be a naysayer, but say we don't get the grant, do we have like a backup plan just in case that it doesn't happen?
So if we don't get the grant, then we'll probably be speaking more about how we can do that from our operational budget a little bit. But however, the consultants that we've been talking to, the amount of work that goes into play right now, they have explained to us that they don't necessarily give you the implementation grant with the $250,000 if they don't have the intentions on moving you forward.
And other districts that have received this grant, for ten years, they've been receiving this funding. So we feel like this is something that could, we could sustain, you know, once we go this far.
And as we have with any grant, we'll make sure that we build into our budget. Should we anticipate funding's not gonna be there, we'll build into our budget, you know, the funding that would be needed to sustain or move these positions into the budget should the funding go away or should the funding sunset.
Mr. Laura?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good presentation, thank you very much for that. Now, you were saying three, four-year-olds can attend the program, but right now we only have four and five-year-olds? Is that the way I understood it?
No, the full-day pre-kindergarten classrooms at Mulcahy, Chamberlain, East Taunton, and Pole are pre-K, which are four to five-year-olds. We serve three to five-year-olds at the Letty Preschool.
And the CPPI grant would, would, so we're doing pre-K, four to, four and five-year-olds. However, the CPPI grant will support all kids at all preschool age levels. So that's where that three and four-year-olds come from.
So now what about Head Start and YMCA? Do they take younger than that based upon need?
They, they, they have an infant toddler program at the Y. I don't believe Head Start does.
No, so just Head, just the Y.
So just the Y, but they would not receive any, for that, those classrooms, they don't, they're not CPPI classrooms, they're not eligible because they're, it's preschool age, it's early childhood education, which starts at three.
At three, yeah. Now, what type of instruction are these individuals who are training these youngsters, the certif, have to be certified to teach any discipline?
So for preschool, for, for preschool, like the Y, they do have a certification. I don't remember the licensing agency. I used to be one of those teachers, but it was a different name back then. I don't, it's off the top of my head. But they do require certification, and they do require, like, we have to do PDPs. They do require that recertification process also. Most preschool teachers that work there have at least a minimum associates and have gone through a, like, a very credentialed program through, or bachelors.
Thank you, it's a good program.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Okay, Dr. DeMello?
Thank you, Mayor. So thank you for the presentation, as Mr. Ennis was concerned about the funding. Is this tied to Student Opportunity Act? So I know that you said some districts have been doing this for ten years. Of course, I'm just concerned, what is this tied to, this funding, you know, Superintendent?
This is part of, I believe, Governor Healy's administration and grants and funding that she's made available.
It is.
Right, but it's coming from somewhere, right? The state, okay, all right, thank you. So now, do the, does it cost anything for the families?
So we can, the families, so it would be a preschool cost, right, for the families? However, the amount of money that we would be receiving, we would also utilize for stipends and for assistance, so that if there's a family on a needs basis, would absolutely get scholarships or stip, or, or some sort of assistance to attend school so that if, if someone doesn't have that access, that's not the reason they're not coming to pre-K.
Okay, so we're not eliminating anybody?
And currently, our pre-K fees are on a sliding scale based on income.
Good. And one other point, so transportation, are we providing transportation, or they're too young to be?
Only for students that are, students with disabilities at this time.
Students with disabilities. And one last comment. You, you talked about, especially with the special education piece, a child being at Head Start, coming to TPS, and then going back to Head Start, right? So you talked about freeing up space. I, I lost something there.
That's okay. So that student, so we have to divide by numbers. So at the Letty Preschool, our class sizes are at fifteen because we have eight general education slots and seven special education slots. So we always have a waiting list, and then we, we always, if you talk with the principal there, we have to worry about our special education slots as we find and qualify students with disabilities. Us creating an itinerant team where we go onsite to the Y or to Head Start, that student that would have normally come over here and take, and have taken one of those seven seats now creates another vacancy to allow more students in the public school, that they don't need the Head Start or the Y program. Does that make sense?
No, no, it does, yes.
Sorry, I kind of...
No, it is, there's a lot of information, so just want to make sure I got it right.
So we're, so we're building, we're, we're servicing students in our community better, and we're also allowing more opportunities and more choices for our families of what they want their preschool, their child's preschool experience to be like.
Got you, thank you so much, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Thank you, Superintendent.
Just real quick in closing, so I believe I was on slide 10. We will be, we're in the process of developing a job description, and that will be going before rules for the three readings to make sure it gets approved. Then we'll be using the grant funding to hire preschool project coordinator administrator that will be funded through the grant. And again, I just don't sometimes think this committee gives themselves credit, because again, we're ahead of the curve when it comes to servicing our three, four, and five-year-olds. So again, I want to commend you publicly for supporting this vision. Last year, we had over 500 three, four, and five-year-olds in Taunton Public Schools, receiving access to high-quality instruction. Medical needs are being met through our nursing staff and also receiving meals. So again, it goes beyond the ABCs and the 1-2-3s. We're really caring for our kids. And as one of the school board members mentioned in a, in a recent conversation, now we're a comprehensive school system, and we support all our kids, and we have multiple programs, athletics, performing arts, now, the arts, including a robust, soon-to-be a very robust pre-K program. So I commend you for all the work. It's hard keeping up with those two ladies, but they keep me on my toes, and, and the work, the work that they are doing is commendable in addition to their day job. So thank you very much for your outstanding work.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to the superintendent's report.
This will be, this will be brief. So I'm very proud to announce that because of last year's success with my residency program, where I embedded myself in a building for a month, this year, twice a month, on Tuesday, I believe it's the second and fourth Tuesday of every month, I will be embedding myself in one of our schools. So I had my first residency at Parker Middle School, and my second residency will be at the Bennett Elementary School, followed by the high school. So I continue to keep the committee updated. And during my time there, I meet with the principals, we conduct walkthroughs, we visit classrooms, and we, I speak with students, similar to what we do with Isaiah, to learn what's working well in the building, what could improve, and I get a sense of the level of instruction, the rigor that's taking place in the, in the buildings. Next, this one, I love this, I love this program, and I want to thank Dr. DeMello for helping to coordinate this through the university and through Taunton High School. So Taunton High School, we were pleased to welcome visitors from the Madera Island, which is the home to my favorite soccer player in the world, Ronaldo. So we had five students and their teacher who won the Primero Atlantico Junior Competition, which is a national science competition sponsored by FLOT. FLOT is the Los American Foundation for Development in Sciencea Viva, which is live science. The contest aimed to promote scientific and technological culture and appreciation of the Atlantic Ocean as a valuable and sustainable resource. Part of their prize for winning this contest was to visit the United States. As much as the students from Madera appreciated the visit here, I think our students and our staff that got to meet the students, it was, again, it was just a mutually beneficial exchange program. They got to meet, they got to visit classrooms, they got to see our Chapter 74 shops in action, they got to attend the football game, and for every student and the teacher, that was their first football game. And to see the kids holding an actual football, you would have, you would have thought I gave them a golden egg. It was really a great experience. So thank you, Dr. DeMello, for helping to coordinate that and for, you know, taking the students at Taunton High into the football game. It was a, it was a great event, and I personally loved, this group was the first group that I can recall that actually had female participants who won in the science program. And I, there's nothing better than seeing females who have a passion for math and passion for science or a passion for STEM. All right. Isaiah, you stole my thunder. The food truck, it's amazing, super excited, can't wait to have it up and running. And personally, I'm hoping I get to drive it and hopefully serve some food.
That's Mrs. Fagan's job.
That's Mrs. Fagan. Maybe Mrs. Fagan can help with the menu. But very excited to be one of the few high schools in the Commonwealth that actually has a food truck and to give our kids that industry practice of what it's like to actually work an actual restaurant on wheels. So again, I commend you all for having that vision to support our Chapter 74 program, and we're looking forward in the near future, once we've completed our medical pathway center, our early childhood center, the food truck and the commercial kitchen. We plan on having a ribbon-cutting and having the school committee, city council, our elected officials see what the investment in education, the fruit that is produced. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Superintendent?
Mayor, if I may, I just want to publicly, on behalf of Bridgewater State University, thank Taunton Public Schools, the superintendent's office, Isaiah and the students that received, the students that visited. The magnitude of this is that they're coming from a district that has 300 students to a high school that has over, what, 2,800 students. So it was just an eye-opening experience. I just want to share that last year's group, one of the students has been accepted to a very prestigious aviation science program dealing with NASA eventually. So these are experiences that show these kids that there's a lot more out there than what they're, you know, visible to in their little, small part of the world. So it's all a great collaboration, and thank you to Taunton Public Schools on behalf of Bridgewater State.
I forgot to mention that the students, their award-winning science project was creating filters from banana trees that removes microplastics from washing machine water and preventing plastic from ending up in the ocean, which was pretty amazing.
Impressive.
Bless you. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. You have another-
Motion to and second, Mr. Superintendent's report.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Do you have another item under?
Sorry. So I'll be quick, because this was a carryover from the last meeting. So Chapter 6 of the Governance Course, so we are, we are nearly halfway complete with the book. Chapter 6 focuses on the importance of establishing strong governance culture within the school board, and it also talks about how it's, how the public or those viewing the meetings can tell right from the onset whether or not a school committee is high-functioning or not high-functioning, based on the mannerisms and professionalism, the mutual respect demonstrated by the members. It also talks about how it's important to have established norms, which this, this committee does. We have our norms that we review during our annual retreats, and this chapter also focused on three critical areas: governance principles, norms, which I mentioned, and also protocols. So again, I thought it was a, an excellent chapter, and I saw a lot of, a lot of similarities to the work that we do, although we're not perfect. I did see a lot of similarities in this chapter, so a lot of the work and a lot of the principles and the norms that we try to adhere to as a group.
Mayor, if I may, I think the superintendent has the teacher's book, the teacher's version's books. He has these amazing Cliff Notes that I can just see over my shoulder. So he should share those Cliff Notes with us, and that way we don't have to read it.
I will.
Thank you.
All right.
The study, the Reader's Guide.
All right. Excellent. Thank you, Superintendent Cabral. Next, we have administrative business, staffing report. Any business with the staffing report?
Received and placed on file.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. And then Taunton Public School's staffing update.
Yeah. Very excited, and I need to commend the work of Director of Human Resources, Shannon Turner. We are 96% staffed when it comes to TEA classroom teachers. It's where we are 4% away from reaching 100%. And as you'll see, most of the positions that are vacant, district-wide positions, and I believe we have six buildings that are fully staffed, where every classroom has a teacher. So very proud of the work taking place in the HR department, and we will not be satisfied until we are 100%. That is our goal this year.
Received and placed on file.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. And then we have the MCAS Referendum Impact Summary. Is that just informational or?
I'll just go over it real quick for the committee. So I believe it was the last meeting, the question was raised about question two and the impact and what question two actually stands for. So I did a little research based on information that's been shared with me by the Massachusetts Association of Schools Superintendents, and question two, if passed, question two were passed would remove the requirement for high school students in Massachusetts to pass the Grade 10 MCAS exams in English, Mathematics, and Science in order to receive their diploma. It is important to note that this question does not affect MCAS testing at other grades or its role in the state's accountability system, meaning kids will still have to take the MCAS, and schools, school districts will still be rated on the MCAS scores as part of their accountability with the state. So the pros for eliminating the MCAS graduation requirement, increased flexibility. So with the statewide requirement, without the statewide requirement, individual districts would have more flexibility to determine graduation standards, allowing for a more localized and potentially innovative approach for assessing students and student achievement. Experts also believe that it would reduce testing pressure or testing anxiety. There's also been a lot of discussion regarding equity. Advocates argue that the MCAS requirement disproportionately impacts marginalized groups such as students of color, English learners, and students with disabilities. Eliminating this requirement could address concerns about equity by providing alternative pathways to graduation. This was something that we experienced during COVID with our special needs students as we were allowed to demonstrate multiple ways where students met the graduation requirement to different competencies. And also an opportunity for broader assessment models. So the passage of question two could encourage development of more comprehensive assessments that reflect a wider range of students' skills and competencies beyond the NCIS tests. So those are the pros. The cons would be a loss of uniform standard. So one of the pros was that each district could create its own localized assessment for graduation. So one of the cons is you're going to have 300 different localized standards for graduation. So what would a diploma from Taunton High School mean compared to a diploma, say, from Bridgewater Rainham? Because they'd be utilizing different standards. So that could, that could be one of the, one of the cons. Could also increase potential inequities. In the absence of a statewide requirement, schools may adopt varying standards that could unintentionally marginalize certain student groups. And then also the impact on accountability. MCAS has been the key component for Massachusetts' educational reform efforts for the past 30 years. We are leading the nation. We have high accountability, we have high standards, and we are leading the nation when it comes to education in Massachusetts. And, and one of the cons is there is no immediate replacement. So if this gets approved in November, we will be scrambling between now and the end of June to put together an accountability system by which we will use to measure students who graduate. So again, that's an unbiased opinion, weighing the pros and the cons. You have the information, and hopefully, when you go to the voter's box, you make an informed decision that benefits all our students.
Okay. Thank you, Superintendent.
Received and placed on file.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Subcommittee reports, special programs. Mrs. Shofs?
Thank you, Mayor Connell. I'd like to inform you that the Special Programs Subcommittee convened on Tuesday, October 15th at 4:00 PM. Present, present at the meeting was myself, Gil Enos, Superintendent John Cabral, and Communications Personnel Cynthia Johnson. Lou Laura was unable to attend. The purpose of this meeting was to provide an update on the ongoing efforts to enhance the district's website by incorporating comprehensive information about the special programs offered for students. This will make it easier for parents and caregivers to assess, to access the information online. Ms. Johnson led the discussion regarding the advancements in social media, the district's website, and in communications. She provided an update on the integration of the information from the Student Support and Special Program booklet that was originally presented in April of 2024 by Amy Monahan and Stephanie Hoy into the district's website. She emphasized the significant changes to the website by showcasing the before and after webpages. Ms. Johnson highlighted the extensive effort dedicated to aligning the content with the district's strategic plan and ensuring its accuracy. She provided detailed information explaining that each page contains the program's organization, the supervising departments, alignment with the strategic objectives, grade span, program description, and hyperlinks for references. She also emphasized the need to include hyperlinks to clarify various abbreviations and mentioned an upcoming glossary of terms to aid users. Ms. Johnson stressed the importance of prioritizing the incorporation of at least 33 programs across various sections of the district's website. So she provided an overview of both finished and draft pages illustrating the substantial scale of the task at hand. Additionally, Ms. Johnson emphasized her reliance on a range of administrators, principals, and department heads to provide the essential information for developing or updating each page, a process that demands a significant amount of time. So the discussion also included the potential transition of the district's website to Parent Square. It's the current district communication tool that they're using. Parent Square now offers a new website, resources, and it's more user-friendly, both for the creators and for the user. This significant investment may require a review from the school committee in the future. Nonetheless, the ongoing website improvements to the district's current website are valuable, as the district will need to provide this information for a new website regardless. She also shared the latest school updates and parent access data regarding the communications via Parent Square. An impressive 99% of the parents or guardians have provided their cell numbers or emails to receive immediate notifications either from the district, from a school, or from teachers through the platform. There's approximately 98 family records in the district that are missing, and secretaries are working on verifying and updating this information. So finally, Ms. Johnson indicated that all communications from the district are now translatable to any Google language, ensuring that this information is accessible to all families. It is recommended that Ms. Johnson present to the school committee as a whole at one of the January 2025 meetings to showcase these recent updates to the district's website. The Special Programs Subcommittee ended at 5:05.
Thank you, Mrs. Shofs.
Oh, there's one. There you go. So that's one that she had been working on. Yes. So the buttons are more user-friendly. It's easier to access the, the, the different areas, and her goal is that when you press a button, if a parent has to, a caregiver has to fill out a form, that it will go to all the different places that need it versus them having to print it and then deliver it to different places, or going to one, one area in the school and not in another place that needs it. So it's a much bigger undertaking than we initially thought. So I was very impressed with what she had done. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Shofs.
Thank you.
If there are no questions or comments, motion to-
Received and placed on file.
Do you, do you usually do that or make a motion to accept the report?
Motion to accept. I'm sorry.
Okay.
Motion to accept the report by the committee.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. Thank you. And then we have the High School Advisory Subcommittee. Mr. Palowski?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This afternoon, we had a meeting of the High School Subcommittee. The subject was to hear the school improvement plan for Freedman Middle School. In attendance from the administration was Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum Christopher Barata, Superintendent John Cabral. Off of the High School Subcommittee was myself and Mrs. Fagan. Mr. Vera was absent due to illness. We were also joined by Dr. DeMello. Principal Dr. Sarah Buckley gave the school improvement plan. She shared with us the Freedman Middle School's very ambitious but achievable goals for fiscal year '25, specifically goals for the school around improving students' writing scores, implementing the mind-up social, emotional learning curriculum across the board, goals towards improving attendance and reducing chronic absenteeism, and a final goal of reviewing the current schedule, forming a committee to look at options for new schedules that would best suit the needs of Freedman Middle School students. So the most impressive thing about the, the presentation was that every step of the way, every goal that Freedman Middle School has, was very clear that the staff and Dr. Buckley put the students first in every decision that they make, and all their goals are towards making sure that they get the best education possible for their students. So we thank Dr. Buckley and the entire staff at Freedman Middle School for the school improvement plan. And that is, concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Palowski.
Motion to accept the report is submitted by the chairman of the board.
Motion in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None opposed, so voted. And lastly, we have Finance and Law, Dr. DeMello.
Thank you, Mayor. Earlier this evening, the Finance and Law Subcommittee met. Part of the committee is Mrs. Shaws, myself, and Mr. Vera. Unfortunately, he was ill and absent. First item we discussed was disposal of surplus equipment, multitude of pieces of tools and equipment that is now obsolete and unsafe for our students and staff, and have, we unanimously voted to allow the school department to put it on the City of Taunton Gov. Deals. That was unanimously voted to do that. Next up, we had the Taunton High School Softball Field Renovation Bid Award. Last meeting, we had three bids submitted, I'm sorry, four bids submitted. The lowest and most responsible bidder was Heimlich Landscaping Construction in the amount of $2,795,000 with a $50,000 alternate included for electrical work at the baseball field. The bid was $795,000 higher than what we had initially anticipated, but the NESRA Engineering Company has worked with Heimlich and assured us that the outcome will be above, above and beyond our expectations. Unfortunately, things have gone up, so we did accept the $2,795,000 bid. Again, voted unanimously. Next up, we had the facilities update. Mrs. Monahan went over the facility due and the outstanding items that have been-
Mrs. Monahan went over the facility due and the outstanding items that have been taken care of and still to be worked on. Nothing out of the ordinary, just normal process. Once again, voted unanimously to accept the facilities update. And the last two items were the bills payable for FY '25 in the amount of $1,950, $1,9562.62. There were multiple questions asked concerning the warrant. Nothing out of the ordinary, but just making sure all the pennies are accounted for. Mrs. Shaws does a great job also on that piece, and that was voted unanimously to accept the warrant for FY '25. And the last item was the FY '24 warrant for $296,994.94. And once again, two items were questioned, accounting for the pennies, and voted unanimously to accept the warrant, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. DeMello. There are a motion to accept.
Motion to accept the report by the committee.
Motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted, okay. There is no new business list?
I have something I'd like to bring up.
Okay, sure, Mrs. Shaws.
Thank you. In light of the lawsuit that is going on with Hingham with the student and the AI, I'd like to see if we could put this on an agenda to discuss what our policies are going to be for AI and make sure that in our student handbooks, we have the necessary wording to protect ourselves from such a lawsuit. Because according to what I've been reading and following, a lot of the wording that was put into the handbook was put in after the student got disciplined for using it. So I want to make sure that we, make sure that we are not open to a similar type of situation. And I also want to make sure that there's consistency with how we deem it being used or the school or the teachers, that we have a consistency. Because we don't want to have, we don't want to open ourselves up for a similar type of lawsuit.
Second.
So would your motion be to refer it to a future agenda?
Either a future, I don't know if this could be a school committee as a whole, or does this go to a subcommittee? What would you think?
So I'm in the process, that would probably make sense to go to rules.
Okay.
Because it would be a policy, and it would impact the high school handbook.
Mm-hmm.
And without going into great detail, this is work that we are already scratching the surface on.
Yes, okay. So I'll make a motion for it to go to the rules and then have them bring it back to the school committee as a whole.
Okay, so a motion and a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted. All right, unfinished business, the Development Impact on Enrollment Letter to City.
Yeah, in your file, in your packet, you should receive a copy of the letter that I addressed to City Engineer Michael Patnod and Director of Planning and Conservation, Kevin Scanlon. I will keep the committee informed as I receive feedback from their departments regarding a future meeting and their availability.
Okay, and then we have the City Council meeting regarding Two Hamilton Streets.
I would just ask you to go to paragraph four that begins with "this afternoon." So there will be a meeting on Tuesday, October 29th, 2024, at City Hall and the City Council chambers to discuss the Two Hamilton Street property and the vote that was taken by the school committee on October 2nd. I forgot to add the time, that meeting will take place at 6:00 PM. And if you are able to attend, please RSVP with Wendy Devine. She can be contacted on the main line, or you can reach her by email, which I included in the memo.
Okay, thank you, Superintendent. Yes. Okay, and then we have the Action Item Update, any business with that?
The only item that can come off is the food truck on 9/7.
Motion to remove the food truck from the Action Item Update.
Motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted. There is no press.
Sorry.
Sure.
Is the dining area all set?
No, we're still awaiting the awning, I believe that's the last item. And then obviously, the furniture, but the awning is the only thing holding up that project.
So should we be removing it, that's why I brought up?
We usually leave it on until it's fully, but I have no problem making, reducing the list after DeMello, so.
Well, you only have five items there, I mean, that's my suggestion. I don't know if the maker of the motion wants to rescind the motion, because we have an item still outstanding.
If you like, part of the motion.
Well, I believe the motion was just voted on. Did you, did we, did we go to vote? I'm sorry, there was a motion in a second.
To remove, this is about the food truck.
Yeah, and I believe it was voted to remove it.
Wait a minute, hold on a second. Oh, just the one item, food truck, not the entire, the culinary, I'm sorry. I thought the whole thing had to come off.
No problem.
Gotcha.
So, and that motion was voted on, yes, okay.
I was late to the draw.
I don't, this should be under unfinished business. We had blasted through a little book there that you have us reading, but I would urge my colleagues to please pay attention to that chapter. There's a lot of things that end up happening, and you see it really around the country, too, this bitterness going on between people. I don't think you get anything done when you do that, and I think that we need to be more conservative of the fact that we're all different individuals, we all have different opinions, but we can respect one another's opinions. And when the, when the school committee makes a decision, I'm sorry, whether you're happy with it or not, if it's a decision of the committee, you go along with it. So I, I just thought that was stuff we could have talked about a little bit. Some of the men I knew had read this, they were supposed to, and Melissa would have brought it up, because...
Their turn.
Their turn, we read it, but there was a lot of that, what we read in there, that really resonated with me. And one of the things I've said before, and I'd like to say it again, I like the time when we could agree to disagree, and we could still be friends. And I don't want to walk out of here and have to say that person's not my friend anymore, because I consider you all my friends, so, and family, so. I just think that we should be cognizant of that, but if you didn't read the chapter, that summary was there, but there were things that I know that we talked about years ago, and I remembered when we were formulating the whole thing that we did there, and it's worked well. But I think every now and then, we have to revisit it and make sure that we're sticking to our guns. And that's probably not even something you can say right now, but you know what I mean. We just got to stick to what we're doing, all right?
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
One politically incorrect thing, apologize.
Thank you, Mrs. Fagan.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on, there are no press here, and so we'll take a motion to adjourn. Motion in second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, none opposed, so voted, thank you, everyone.